Good morning, almost afternoon. I call to order the September 5th, 2018 Regular Business Meeting of the Cincinnati Board of Education. We welcome everyone and ask that you please silence your cellphones and other electronic devices, and please join me for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates.
Present.
Ms. Bolton.
Present.
Mrs. Copeland-Dansby.
Present.
Mr. Davis, Mr. Messer, Mr. Morowski.
Here.
President Jones.
I need a motion to approve the following minutes. Special meeting, August 27th, 2018, Regular Business Meeting, August 27th, 2018.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Does anyone have any kudos? Well, in lieu of any formal kudos, I'd like to give a special shout out to our superintendent and her team, as well as all of our teachers and parents and students. We're in the fourth week of school. That's amazing. Ms. Bates, please present the retirements.
Yes, we have one retirement, as of November 1st. Selena J. Myrick. We congratulate Selena on her service to our district and thank her for the work that she has done and wish her well.
Thank you. We are now at the item on our agenda for hearing from the public. We have one speaker today. Our speaker has three minutes to speak, and our timekeeper will be Ms. Wagner on the end. When the buzzer goes off, your three minutes are up. We'll ask Ms. Marlena Brookfield to please join us at the podium.
Today, I want to talk to you about our Title I and IDEA funding. The Alliance to Reclaim Our Schools report was supposed to be released today. It's unfortunately delayed, so I will just give you some of the highlights in as much as they relate to our district. In terms of Title I and IDEA funding, no public school district has ever received the full amount of IDEA and Title I funding that's supposed to be allocated to them. This is a problem, especially for our district, where 20% of our students qualify for special education. Obviously, it's something we need to address, and just to kind of put the numbers down, in 2017, a funding gap of $783 million is what the state of Ohio saw, just for IDEA alone. I recognize that we're all very busy, but as this is a very important election year, if we can kind of put the bugs in the ears of our elected officials in Congress, that would be awesome. So that's what I leave you with today. I'm definitely going to be getting on the horn, you know I will, and carry on.
We have two amazing presentations today. I'm going to turn over to our superintendent for introductions.
First of all, we appreciate the opportunity to talk about school safety. It is our first and number-one priority, quite honestly, over academic achievement, which comes second. We have to make sure that our families know that our kids are safe on their way to school, once they're at school, and on the way home. So, in light of a lot of things that have taken place across the nation, last year, we put some additional measures in place in our school district, and in many cases, we are ahead of other school districts across the state and across the nation. We're not ever satisfied with what we do, and we're constantly striving to improve our security. And so, this morning, we're going to have a presentation regarding safety and security, and please note, it's the amount of information that we can present without compromising all the strategies and things we put in place. And so, I'd like to introduce Ralph Ruin, who is over Safety and Security for our district to come forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mitchell. Morning, good afternoon, board members, Superintendent Mitchell, and Treasurer Jennifer Wagner. I'm here today to speak a little bit about security, what we've had, and where we're going, and where we'd like to go. So with that, Cincinnati Public School Safety and Security Services. Our department provides assistance to schools administrators when needed to maintain a safe and learning environment, secure learning environment. In the Security Department, we have two administrators, myself and Dan Downe. He's the investigator, training coordinator. We will now have five response teams. We did have four, that's counting our team leader and the other response team. We added two members to the response team. We respond to emergencies at all the schools, investigate any reports of dangerous situations. We coordinate inspections of safety systems, we conduct random searches, we inspect and support the AEDs. We now have over 125 school-based security assistants, and that's probably going to rise. We're in the process of hiring others. They've added 14 for this year. Our school safety features, we have the walk-through metal detectors. We have them in all of our high schools. We have school cameras, well over 4,000, and adding. We also have in every school the visitor login badge system. It's the lobby guard, and that's when people come in. They go through the lobby guard to make sure that they're not predators before we allow them in the schools. Some other features, we have the weather radio. That allows for, that's a national weather service that allows, lets knows if there's any tornadoes or severe storms coming our way. We have the lockdown weather alert button that we hit that notifies the schools, and that's also, the lockdown button notifies the schools when we're going into a lockdown due to either activity in the neighborhood, or an active shooter, or some dangerous situation in the schools. We have a safe entry system, which allows our first responders, more so the fire department than the police, because we've issued every police officer in Cincinnati a access key card, set up just like our badge, which allows them to go in the school at any given time. They don't have to wait for a key or open a box to get a key out. They can swipe and go on in. We don't identify that card, we just put it on there, Cincinnati Police, and nobody, if something was to happen to that card, they wouldn't know it was for our schools. We have well over 1,500 portable walkie-talkie radios in our schools. We're constantly adding. We have a local and district-wide communication. In other words, they can communicate on one channel with just their school personnel, or they can communicate on another channel, district-wide. Everybody that has a walkie-talkie would hear them coming over. We have what we call Mark's Radio. It's an emergency radio. It's used in only active shooter cases. It's a big orange button. The personnel would hit that button. It's providing countywide police communications. They hear that come over, and they can listen to see what's going on. So if there is an active shooter in the building, they send it out countywide, and police agencies throughout the county will respond to that location. And it does work, because several years back, someone accidentally hit it and didn't answer back up at one of our high schools, and they even sent a helicopter. And they had all, the Hamilton County Sheriff's, they had Silverton, they had, you name it, they responded to the school. We have a school safety crisis plan, every school. We have drills, it's mandated by law. The safety drills, you have to have three safety drills a year, it's mandated. We also have to have six fire drills, which are required. Tornado drill between March through May. Everybody is trained in ALICE, that's the active shooter. We follow the Cincinnati Police Protocol, that's what they use, that's what they want us to use, and it's required by House Bill 178. Our emergency flip charts, we don't update those every year, because it gets quite costly, but they haven't changed. I think this was back in 2015 when we updated. Anytime there's a school, every school should have these. Something goes on, if they don't know exactly what they do, they just have to go to a quick reference point on that emergency procedure chart. Our secure entry systems, every one of our schools are secured, the doors are locked. The visitors get buzzed in the building, they can't get in, the buzz in the main office allows them to get in, what we call vestibule. Once they're in the vestibule, they have to be buzzed into the vestibule, and then, once they're in the office itself, they have to be buzzed out of the office to get into the school area. So they'll either allow or deny, depending on the situation. And the lobby guard, you see, that's right there at the office, they get a lobby guard, and they put a little stickum badge on. Background checks, all of our employees are required to have the FBI and the BCI and I, and that goes through our Human Resources Department. Our supervised volunteers, contractors, consultants, they get a local background from the county in which they reside, and that goes through our office, the security office. The unsupervised volunteers, contractors, consultants, student teachers are required also to have the FBI and BCI and I. That's through the security office also, and when I say unsupervised, they have to have an employee, one of our employees with them, if they're going to be supervising children. If they're going to be alone with the children, they have to go that extra step and get the FBI and the BCI and I. And we now offer, which is cheaper, them to get their FBI and BCI and I here at the district, which I think downtown's between $65 and $70, and they can get them done here for $25 apiece, so $50 total charge. Everybody's required to have an ID badge, that's all employees, all volunteers, contractors, consultants, student teachers. Anyone going to be around our students have to have an ID badge. Our emergency school relocation site, that's been Jacob Center. It's maintained for temporary emergency need. They have over 20 classrooms, office settings, they have telephones, network, wireless, they have the camera system, they have the secured entry, they have the lobby guard, they have the walkie-talkies. They have security also out there. CPS, we require that there's safety training for all employees, and those are the safety trainings that are required, required to go through with bullying recognition, child abuse, dating violence, general ethics, homeless students, human trafficking, youth suicide, bloodborne, pathogens, ALICE, the FERPA law, and cybersecurity. The Cincinnati Fire Department has now put a program together called Stop the Bleed, and the reason they put that together is due to all the shootings in the, not just the schools, but throughout the country, and what they found, that they could, people knew how to stop someone from bleeding, know how to put a tourniquet on, know when to put a tourniquet on, know when to stuff the wound, whatever. They could save more lives and move on to the next victim. I had Cincinnati Fire Department come out to our last professional development, and every one of our security assistants, there was a few that couldn't attend that were there, were trained in the Stop the Bleed. So basically, all of our schools now have, and I believe the fire departments are going to start going around the schools and also teaching other staff members to stop the bleed. The other part here is reported in the American School Board Journal. Those are percentages of different things, the control access, the majority of the schools, like 93%, we're at 100% of every one of those listed. We're also recognized by the Council of Greater City Schools as a leader in school security. I've been to a number of different one of those, and we are so far ahead over the years of, majority of large school districts with our security measures, it's just unreal. Okay, this is what we started to do for the 2018, and I know the first one, Development of School Safety Task Force, started at the end of last year, and that was implemented by our superintendent, Ms. Mitchell. She decided who she wanted on that, and as you see, we have CPS administrators, we have the principals, school psychologists, school culture and safety manager, we have assistant superintendents, we have Cincinnati Police Department, Green Township Police Department, because we have Cove Dell in Green Township, Chiviet Police Department, because we have Chiviet School in Chiviet. We have the Hamilton County Sheriff's Office, we've added Green Township also, they're there. We've added over there at Silverton, but the Hamilton County Sheriff covers that over there. We have the Department of Homeland Security, we have the Fusion Center, and the Fusion Center also came to our professional development for the security this past training, and spoke about what their role is and how they can help. They send us updates through, throughout the country of trends and things going on in different areas of the country with the schools, and it's real good information. They want us to pass it on if something's going on in our school, so they can add it to their list. We also have the Cincinnati Fire Department, the FBI, and CFT involved in the task force. As I stated before, we've added 10 additional metal detectors this year, since the first of the year. Seven of them was placed at Walnut Hills, and I'll talk a little bit about that. That is just a huge, huge school, and they have so many exterior doors. We placed all seven of those in different locations, so they could allow the students to come in, different doors, to alleviate the backup, and still, we're adjusting that. We're in a tradition, we're kind of trial and error, you would say. We just moved one of them to a different location to alleviate some of the congestion in one area. We're still having problems. Dan was out there this morning, students coming indoors that, we had Jerry Roberts and his group change all the doors where they, the doors that don't have the metal detectors, we don't have them unlocking, they're on timers. We don't have them unlocking early in the morning, but the first bell, then they all unlock. But kids are going inside and still opening doors and allowing students to get in. So our next, our next thing we're going to do, I'm getting together with Jerry Roberts, and we're going to go out, and we meet with the principals, and we walk to school again, just like we did with the metal detectors. We're going to see if we can identify which doors that the students are coming in the most, and we're going to put what we call these detex alarms on them. So, that hopefully alleviates it. And what we're probably going to have to do, they're going to continue to find doors, and we just don't have the money right now to replace all, put detexes on every single door. So what we'll probably do is, if it does open up, we'll probably look at the cameras, find out which student it was, and let the principal deal with them, and let them know. They're so used to coming in these doors, and a lot of the students, we remember, they've been coming in these doors for years, and now, all of a sudden, they're not allowed in this door, or this door, or this door. So it's going to take some time, it's not going to happen overnight, so I hope everybody can bear with us until we get it all straightened out. We added two additional response team members, so that's given us two on the east side and two teams on the west side. And what this is going to do is, this is going to allow us to do more random searches, and we'll have more, we have people free to go to more situations to help out at the I hit on the detex alarms at the doors. We're, Dan and I are conducting audits at each of the schools and making recommendations. We go to the schools, we meet with the principal, or if she's not there, the assistant principal, and then we're making recommendations to the principal regarding security improvements. And we also ask them, is there anything you would like to see changed, and get input from them. I'm also working with Terry Davis, she's a grant writer. It's in reference to a grant opportunity for security improvements. It hasn't been posted yet, but I was made aware of this, so I went to Terry, and she's keeping an eye. As soon as it gets posted, she's going to let me know, and I'm going to, that's one of the things, if it allows for it, to ask for more detex alarms, maybe more walk-through metal detectors. Our COO, Scott Adams, and I met a group of students at Walnut Hills a little while back. It was decided to look into what they call schoolology, schoology, schoology. I wasn't aware of it. I've been out of school a long time. Apparently, these kids, they use this, this schoology as a way of life for them. They use it in their studies. So, they mentioned it, there was one in particular student that asked if we could look into it. So, it would be for the staff, the students. So what we did, I met with Sarah Oliver, Sarah Trimble Oliver, COO, and Erin Heinrich, the blended learning coordinator, and Erin was kind enough to set it up, and said, she came down this morning and showed us how to get on it. She gave us a code that we would be using, so we're going to be filtering that out. She's going to do that also for us, send it out to Walnut Hills, all the Walnut Hills students and staff members out there will be able to get on this schoology and voice their concerns, reference all security items, and we can have a discussion with them right, right like that. And that's the end of the presentation. Does anybody have any questions?
Board members, Mr. Davis.
Thank you for the great presentation. The security assistants, how are they credentialed?
How are they credentialed? They go through a PADA training, that's 132 hours of Ohio peace officers. It's basically, it's not the police officers, it's peace officers training. It's 132 hours at Butler Tech. We hire some of them without it, but they can't be in a school by themselves, and they're given a year if we offer it, they have to take it. They set it up, Butler Tech works closely with us, and we'll get all the security who needs the PADA training, we get with them, and they decide when was the best time to do it. I think the last class we had, they did it like on Wednesday night after school, and then they did it on Saturdays. And once it's completed, they have to take a test, pass the test, and then they're certified.
On the Security Task Force, why is there no parent or student?
Really, I don't have an answer for that.
We're open to adding a parent or a student, or multiple. Initially, quite honestly, the idea was to be able to address some concerns around the strategies that we use, that we don't necessarily want communicated to the public to have an idea of what we're doing in some respects.
I understand.
Yep.
My final question, and thanks again, it was a great presentation. Anytime I'm asked a question, that means it was a good presentation.
Thank you.
I must have been listening. Last question is about, it was toward the end.
Towards the end? Let's see.
It was about schoology. Isn't that for the whole district?
Yes, it will, and the whole district will be able to. We're sending it out to Walnut, since they requested it. I'm sure it's going to move along, because Walnut students have brothers and sisters in other schools, we have employees that have friends in other schools. It's throughout the district, and they can also belong to this, and it's throughout the whole district. So, just getting started, we're just starting with Walnut Hills, but I'm sure it's going to grow.
Thank you for that.
Ms. Morowski.
I just want to thank you, Ralph, and Scott, and everybody for how much attention you give to this. Superintendent Mitchell as well, of course. If our kids can't be safe in school, they certainly can't learn, and I'm really especially pleased that at the, near the end, the last couple slides included our school psychologists through our mind peace partnership, our mental health professionals. We do a really good job, something to be proud of. I know there's been some heartburn lately, but I just want you to know how supportive I am of all of this, and how important I know it is, and I know it's a big undertaking. So thanks for giving us a quick update, Ralph.
Thank you.
Ms. Bolton.
Yes, thank you very much, and as I always say when I see you, I feel safer already, Mr. Ross.
Thank you.
Amen, right? Couple things, first of all, we have a very proud history of resource officers.
Yes.
A thousand years ago, when I was in high school, we had wonderful members of the Cincinnati Police Department. I think that's great. I think we're well ahead and have historical efforts on that. I do think we ought to publish even more that our security force, our security officers, not our resource officers, have that kind of training. I think that's a big, big issue for our families, that I think they'd be not only reassured, but I do think it's part of the professionalization, if you will. And I know that teachers feel very strongly about having high-quality security officers in the buildings, all of the buildings, and particularly in the high school. Not because it's scary or dangerous, but it is a way of making people feel more comfortable, that there is some additional kind of outlet, an additional support system. Always, 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 one of the reasons we're so far ahead is not only the great leadership by you and the district, but it's also the $1.2 billion tax amount revenue that came to us as a result of the FMP. If we did not have such modern buildings, we would not be able to do what we do. So again, it was very forward-thinking as we did the design, and people like Ms. Bates, who has been the champion of safety for the district all the time that she's been on the board, it was part of the reason that that was such an important priority. I will say, and I ditto Mr. Morowski's point about the mental health services and what have you that we have, that many don't, frankly, part of, the part of, let's start over. I taught high school before and after Columbine, and it changed the culture then, and it's only gotten worse from a standpoint of the active shooter piece. But for our kids, bus stops and crossing guards and the bus, and walking to school are part of the fear factor. And I think it, and I know we concentrate, I know we review the bus stops, and we pass that resolution all the time, and I know that there's, we're in a little bit of dispute about the crossing guards and who's responsible. But for us, it'd be great too, and I know you do this, to really see how we coordinate with the police department, particularly at dismissal time and arrival time, and then also the safety of our neighborhoods, because the city has the responsibility in part for that. We're responsible for the bus experience, but the city's really responsible on the crossing guards and how safe or not safe the neighborhoods are.
Right. And I don't know if you're aware, the Cincinnati Police have what they call neighborhood officers now, and basically, they're out patrolling, they're not making a lot of radio runs, they're actually out patrolling and trying to, you know, keep an eye on the safety, especially like in the morning arrivals and dismissal time.
And I know in my neighborhood of College Hill, it's obvious that there's a great presence of the police during those times, and hopefully, that's happening in all the neighborhoods as well. And then, the other piece of the police part is, of course, the wonderful relationships that are built within the district for the police, and between the police and the kids as well. So I think that's really key to... So I think that's really key to it. But again, I remain concerned about, as we heard last time we met, the safety regarding walking to school, uh, the streets, the sidewalks, whatever, things that are the city's responsibility. We have to emphasize to them that they have to come forward with that as we supply the fabulous safety inside our buildings and on our campuses.
And being a prior police officer, I ran my same beat for 15 years before I went in internal affairs. And I, I can tell you, I knew all the kids, they knew me. And it, it would really, it, it makes a lot easier job for the police officer.
Right.
They, they would watch my back. Sure, I'd get out and play basketball with them and pass the ball with them, but you know, I got to know them. That's what I knew best. I knew how to play ball. Um, so I, I knew it best. I couldn't help them maybe with their algebra or something like that, but I could, I could, I could play ball with them. So hopefully the, 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 the beat cop out there is still doing that, stopping, talking with the kids. And that's how you get a lot of your information. And that's another thing with the schoology. I think we'll get a lot more information than we would if we wanted, wanted, uh, implement at this. There's things that they know that we don't know.
Correct.
That they hear all the time. And it might just save some, some student or somebody's life, because they might be able to send it to, to us and, so I think, I think this is going to work big time.
Yeah. Wonderful report.
Ms. Bates.
Can you speak a little bit about the security around our extracurricular events such as the football games, basketball games, uh, performances that members of the community who we may not know are coming into our facilities and, uh, interacting with our students?
I, I, the football and basketball games and such, it's, it's run by ABC. I think everybody's aware of that. Um, however, um, Robert Strater, who is my team leader, he's involved with a lot of the, uh, after-hours activities. Um, they set it up, we, we get with Josh, uh, Mr. Miles, and before the, the season starts, we decide which games are going to be the ones that should be heightened. Just as the one down at Stargel, the one where there were shots fired, had nothing to do with the game, by the way. Nothing to do whatsoever. We had seven police officers down there and eight security assistants. Um, so it was, it was a side street, had nothing to do, but they have a plan to get, together, an evacuation plan that they go by for every stadium, for every gym. Um, as far as, I don't know if some of the smaller activities, but they, they look to see who's going to be there, what, you know, what, what, how heightened the game is or whatever, and they'll adjust the numbers by that. And they're all given a certain location that they're supposed to be placed, um, like there's guys at the main, uh, entranceway, there's people over by the stands, there's people outside the gate, outside the fence, I mean, the, the officers and security. So they're placed in different locations and hopefully nothing happens. But if it does, naturally they're all going to run to that area.
Couple of things. Thank you so much, of course, for an amazing, um, presentation and such great information. Um, just a couple of things of encouragement, um, and then one question. Um, I'm concerned about budget constraints and you all having what you need to make our environments as safe as they can possibly be. So I like to hear you say you're working on the grant and that kind of thing. I wonder what else can happen? What, what else is needed for like the detex alarms and other innovative ideas?
Well, I always look at trying to save the, the district's money. That's why I, if there's a grant comes up, I like to go that route, because if, if they're willing to give us money to buy all this physical, um, security, um, I'll be more than happy, you know, to, to put in for it, so we can use the, the other monies for education or whatever. Um, we, we do have money, you know, in our budget for some detex, but naturally, when you got, I mean, we went out West High, they've got 54 exterior doors.
Right.
That's a lot of doors. That's why we have to go the, to the principals and walk and see which ones they think. It's, they're in the building all the time, the security's in the building all the time. We talk with them, see which doors the kids are more likely to be the ones that go hide out or let people in. And if, and then if we need more there, then we'll go back and might have to adjust it or whatever. Um, I, there's not a bottomless pit. And that's, we just do what we can do, and they had as many tools as we can. Ms. Mitchell's been kind enough, we added all the security this year, that's going to help, because, you know, some of the schools didn't have any security.
Right.
So now we have, all the schools have security.
Right.
Uh, by the way, they're in the same uniform that's provided by the district. They're all wearing the black cargo pants with a white shirt. It says Cincinnati Public Schools with the logo and then says security assistant. Everybody's wearing that same uniform. And the Cincinnati Police, um, agreed with me. They think it's important, so when they get there, they know exactly who the security is.
Nice.
One thing if I could just add, um, at the beginning of this school year, we did bring our security, um, personnel back to work early and paid for them to go through additional training. That is an area that I think that we could do a lot more work in terms of them being professional, but also in terms of them really knowing, um, this, having the skills and the strategies to work with our, our kids and our, um, parents, as well as our staff members in a really effective way. And so one thing I do think would be extremely helpful is ongoing professional development and training for those people. Um, yeah, we're, we're very much interested in, quite honestly, having, um, highly trained and highly equipped people to be able to handle situations until the police arrive. One other, just one thing would be remiss of me not to explain a little bit more clearly my response around parents and students not being on the safety task force. We definitely can create a venue to collect that information or feedback, but in some instances, you, you, I know everyone is aware that students were at hand in terms of committing crimes against other students in school. And so what we try to be very careful about is making sure that our staff members are the only ones who are extremely familiar with the specific routines that we follow and procedures, so that people, um, potentially kids or other people couldn't circumvent our procedures and, um, cause an incident to happen.
Yeah, I, I think that's great. Um, uh, very good information. I might just suggest that there's a subset of, or a way to have a subset of parents and students to at least voice their concerns or talk about, um, you know, safety issues that might be important to them. Um, I want to thank you guys for the work that you've done at Walnut Hills High School, knowing that there are a million entrances there. Um, as a former student and a more recent, um, parent of a graduate, we, we, students could be really creative with those doors over there at Walnut Hills High School. Um, so I would just encourage that we continue to, to massage that. And, and two, it's about communication and how we communicate, um, with the public and letting them know it is our intention to keep our students safe. It's not to inconvenience anyone or have people in long lines waiting to get in to start the day or anything like that, but it is literally for their safety. So I think the more we talk about it, the better.
Yeah, the Walnut Hills, and I've been up there knowing class change.
It's incredible.
They have to go outside.
They do.
They have to go outside. With this additional, um, walkthroughs, they're also putting additional security. And in the morning, they'll be mandating the walkthroughs, but after that, they'll be outside where the, the students exchange classes. So we might have an additional five security assistants outside watching the students and watching for undesirable activity, whatever. So it's, it's going to make them more secure. And you're right, it's not to make them feel like they're being punished, it's, it's to keep them safe. It's, it's unfortunate, but the way the times are nowadays, um, we have to do all we can and provide as many tools as we can.
Yeah.
To keep our students safe.
Yeah. And just in closing, I, I really like the idea of, um, intertwining the schoology and all the great things that schoology can do. I just want us to really be mindful of making it equitable across the district so that all students and all families get the messages, um, whether it's particular to one campus or the entire district or what have you.
And it will be open to all.
Okay.
Um, but we're sending it out first to Walnut. I'm sure once Aiken finds out, once West High, and they'll be able to call and get the code and, and be on there also. Because basically, they can give us information, and I'd, I'd tell you, students know more than we know.
I know.
Of what's going on out there.
That's right.
And they can give us information, maybe stop some of the stuff that's going on.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you. You guys have really difficult jobs and we are very, very appreciative of the work.
Thank you for the time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Superintendent, we have a second presentation.
Yes, and actually, our treasurer is going to introduce this one.
Good morning. Um, so I'd like to introduce Hector Polanco. He's a, uh, finance director of the Cincinnati Preschool Promise Organization. Um, Hector and I served together on the CPP Finance Committee, and, uh, he's going to be talking to you about, um, some budgetary issues for next year, for this year.
Good morning. Uh, you should have received a two-page, double-sided document that it's a review of the expansion of preschool, uh, coverage. If you remember, just to take you back briefly to last year, last year we covered students who were three and four-year-olds, up to 200% of their federal poverty level. This year, we've budgeted to cover students up to 300% of the federal poverty level. But today, I'm only going to focus on those students up to the 250% level. So the presentation you have in front of you, uh, if we flip to the first page, the reason, this is a CPP-only portion, so this does not have the district. But the reason I include it in here is for two purposes. I wanted to show you the process we followed, which was from stu, counting students and then their cost and building the budget up. We followed the same process both for CPP and for CPS. So as you look to the far right, you'll see a pie chart, and it has 200 to 250 and 250 to 300. So based on the estimates that we built for the number of students who would show up, we build a budget based on the cost. If you remember, there's a table in the master agreement that says how much we pay for each layer of student, uh, based on their, uh, poverty level, the family poverty level. If you look to the far left of that chart, you'll see that this was presented to the CPS Finance Committee back in April. So we have been working together jointly, sharing information and trying to build the best budget possible. The only reason again that this is here is to show you the process we followed. If you look at the next page, you will see the actual calculations we used. It says budget population estimate at the top, has a couple of nice, pretty green colors. But I'm going to draw your attention to the middle, under the columns that say estimate for 200 plus to 250% of FPL. If you look in the middle, we estimated the number of students that would be CPP only, meaning in CPP, community provider locations, and CPS only, meaning in CPS school locations. We based that estimate on, actually, the CPP estimate is based on what population we were serving at the time of the below 200%. So we said if we can get 15% of the below 200% population, we will assume we'll get about the same amount in the 200 to 250. The size of the population was defined by RAND, the RAND study that started before the levy. They gave us the information, and you'll have that in the last page. But they said from the 200% and below, it's two-thirds of the population. The next layer, which they analyzed, was 200 to 300, was about 10% of the population, and then the rest was above the 300% of the population. But what we did is for CPP, we used that estimate. For CPS, we actually had a report that allowed us to see how many families were in the district at that time that might have qualified. So we used that report to help educate how much would, would place in 200 to 250 and 250 to 300. So if you look where the green arrows are, it'll show you that roughly, we budgeted $500,000 for the 200 to 250 jointly, meaning the district and CPP, and roughly $230,000 for the 250 to 300. Now, the reason I'm here today is because we fear that the population of 2 to 250 will actually have a higher take-up rate than the general population below 200. So we want to take a methodical step, just halfway to the 200 to 300 that we budgeted, to, uh, open the doors to families who are in 250 to 200 and get information and see, is our estimate too low or too high of the number of families that show up? And the reason is because as we open these layers, we want them to be open for the life of the levy. So if we're off now in this year's budget and many more families show up than the roughly 15% that we estimated of the total population, we will be off for four years running. And then that might be difficult, uh, well, it will be difficult to finance in one way or another. So we want to learn first, open up the next layer from 200 to 250, see where we are around October, November, see who's shown up, both at community and district, and then hopefully come back to you and say, okay, now we can open 250 to 300. So if you look at below where the 514,000 number is, you'll have the RAND population estimates, which tie back to the last sheet that you have in your packet. And you'll also have in the arrows that are green and red, what would happen if we doubled the current capture at the time? So when we did the analysis, we put in 500, but if double the people show up, it'll cost us about 1.2. So our risk is 700,000. Now, because of the type of finance person I am, I actually don't have 514,000 in the budget. I have a little bit more, because I didn't want to turn away anybody. So I think the district is protected and we are protected roughly, I don't know, 20% higher, 25% higher, just in case, so that we don't have a, a budgetary problem. So we're here simply to give you this information, so you understand and hopefully you agree, as the CPP Board has agreed, that we are okay to expand to the next layer of coverage and bring in more families, especially these families who get no aid, right, for preschool, because they're above the 200% of FPL. Can I answer any questions for you?
Do board members have any questions or comments? Ms. Bolton?
I have several. Um, so your recommendation is to go to the 250.
Both for four and three-year-olds, correct. Right now, as soon as I leave here, yes.
Um, and, and I'm comfortable with the 250, and I think we said that a month or so ago, the 300 really scares me, uh, from a standpoint of I'm not sure if we're addressing, we may be having greater numbers, but I don't know if we have, are saving enough money to really address more fully, having more, um, center development, uh, from a standpoint, because this, this is about subsidy money, right, for, for students rather than...
tuition assistance, correct.
Yes.
Yes.
So the subsidy piece or assistance, um, is not addressing what we keep hearing, which is the need for more money and more effort and a more aggressive approach to the workforce development piece. So I, I want to make sure that we're not looking at everything in the budget is about the assistance, when indeed we have to do a number of things regarding, um, the development of more three and four and five star, which can happen pretty readily if we are changing and helping, um, staffing and the qualifications of staffing. It's costly and, and, and right now, I think they're struggling for monies. I know there's a meeting tonight that's going to kind of address that.
I'm glad you know that, yes.
Yeah, and I, so that's, when I see the budget, I want to see that kind of stuff too. I, I think the 250 is cool, but I, again, this is all about three, four, and five stars. We have not lowered the star standard.
That is correct.
To, because we have to bring people up to the standard. And, and maybe you won't, if you know this, I'm impressed, but even the last line on this page 10, it's numbered, where it says, and it's quoting, I guess it's RAND, it said in 19, excuse me, in 2015, the city of Cincinnati, and that's just the city, that is not the school. of Cincinnati, and that's just the city, that is not the school district. We all have to keep that in mind, too. And that was, I think that was true for RAND, that they only did the city. I know they didn't do the
That's correct. They didn't do the county.
The county, they didn't do our district. So those numbers are lower, based upon our size. But they said that there was 174 school or center-based programs serving three- and four-year-olds, for organizations that operate in multiple sites. I don't know how they counted it. But now, how many are there sites, be they school-based or center-based? Is it more than 174? And then also, are we talking in terms of the number of students? So that, this might be, I'd like to see that new number, because I think that would show a lot of growth, I would assume, with the increase in centers. So that would be helpful.
I can tell you that I'm not going to impress you, right now, because I don't know it off the top of my head. But I can tell you that in tuition assistance, we have roughly 40 and 40. It's a little bit higher, but call it, between the district and us, we have basically 80 locations.
So it's 80?
Yep. But those are people receiving tuition assistance.
Those aren't number of units, those are sites, or something.
Yeah. And then if I go to quality improvement, we have there roughly 30 sites that are receiving quality improvement, which was one of your concerns, and another 30 waiting to come in.
And perhaps you've shared this with Finance, but those would be some numbers that I know, as one board member, I'd like to see, so we have the growth that's occurring. And then the number that are here listed as CPS, those are just the preschool students that are part of the preschool promise. We have additional preschoolers. And I think in publications, I think that would be helpful for people to know that we have maybe double that that's cited here, that are also at preschool, so that we can show that growth, whether it's tuition, or whatever it is. Because I think, too often, this number gets published, and it's like, well, I thought you guys already did 1,200 or something. And so that's confusing the voters of that. So those would be issues that I would address.
Out of the 1,600-plus preschool students that we have, last year, 508, I think, were part of the tuition assistance program. All our other ones are from other funding sources.
That's great.
And that's what's challenging for us, to try to predict how this 200 and above is going to grow. Because if you recall, it's last dollar in. The levy monies are last dollar in, and this population doesn't necessarily have any first dollars. And so it could grow on us very exponentially, which is a good thing, but we want to be conservative in our financial approach.
And Madam Chair, if I could just continue along that line, that that's another worry that I have, as we begin to provide additional monies for other families, and I'm happy to do as much of that as we can, I want to make sure that what we, what we were all particularly committed to are the families that could not even think about sending their kids to preschool. So I don't want to have, I want to subsidize as many people as we can, but I don't want to forget what the mission was particularly. And always, always, the major problem of, in this conservative town, is getting families to commit their kids that early. It's just a cultural thing. And then it's also the transportation. The very children, I say this to the superintendent all the time, the very children that may need it the most are the ones that don't have a support system, a network that can get them to and from. Because I know there's several people sitting around the table today that have provided those sorts of services. But I, we're going to have to address the, I don't know how we can, but we're going to have to address getting our, those families to preschool.
If I could just follow up on your question, and I'll do it very briefly, around the community providers. So the Preschool Promise under Shiloh's leadership will be coming out with an annual report relatively soon, which is a beautiful document that highlights the numbers for us. So there are currently 27 community providers. There are 37 that will come online in terms of being at least a three-star in this school year. So it's 37 with another 31 in the pipeline. So Preschool Promise is actively working to really increase their providers that are high-quality.
Thank you.
Board members?
Thank you, Hector. Always great information.
Thank you. May we proceed?
Yes, we're going to have a conversation here shortly.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Okay, we have one resolution today. I will present it. It is a resolution completing the evaluation of Superintendent Laura Mitchell, and I present it as written, hoping for a second.
Second.
Any comments or discussion?
Yes. I want to thank the superintendent, and also the Student Achievement Committee members. And there's been three different iterations of them during the year on student achievement. It's responsible for developing the evaluation. And fortunately, Superintendent was extremely helpful in that, and not only has achieved and done what she needed to do to get a great evaluation, but more particularly helped in the development of it, to make it relevant. And one of the things that she's to be complimented on is that she really, in the new evaluation, wanted to measure our efforts here, not only against other educational institutions, but businesses as well, and other finely tuned organizations. The other thing I would mention is that, because of the transition of leadership, she's really been operating under two different evaluations, kind of divided up. So it's more of a, it's been more difficult than perhaps just one would be. But she's, we appreciate her help and work, and also, obviously, her achievement.
Excellent. Thank you. Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Copeland-Dansby?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Aye.
Okay, so board members, we do have one matter before us related to board matters, which is the expansion of preschool. It's on my agenda. And so we just heard the presentation and the desires to move forward with some expansion. I think Board Member Bolton brought up some really great points, and some really great feedback here. Is there anything else for us to, that anybody else wants to add, or topics for discussion related to preschool promise expansion? Yes, Ms. Bolton?
I'd like to ask the administration as to what they would advise.
Yes.
Because they are, they are our experts, as much as we partner, they are our experts. And what do they advise, both the superintendent and the treasurer?
Yes, I will agree. Yes.
So the treasurer and I have had a lot of conversation about this, and I'm sure that Jen will be willing to speak up. We recommend that we go up to the 250%. It will allow us to address more families' needs.
Treasury, Wagner?
Yes, I spent some time last week analyzing the enrollment data that we had up to date. And I feel comfortable making the recommendation up to 250. We're still updating paraschool with the crush of new enrollments. But, so we'll continue to, continue to analyze that. But I feel confident moving forward.
Okay, good.
Yeah, that sounds good. I'm definitely supportive of it as well. And in a very brief conversation with the treasurer, you know, we'll look to hear back after some time as to how things have progressed, and hoping that we're on a great track. But of course, anytime we can serve more of our children, we're excited to support that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Okay. Superintendent Mitchell, do you have a report?
Have a very brief report in the form of a PowerPoint, a couple slides. Just want to be able to highlight Evanston Academy as one of our Vision 2023.0 schools. So that school kicked off its new vision this year, which has a focus on career awareness and exploration. So currently, the school has more than 15 businesses and colleges that will be working with them to expand their programming. So they are very excited. This is a picture of their back-to-school kickoff event. They held a career expo at their school for their students. So our career-based learning manager, Brittany Cousins, has been involved with the school and will continue to support them. The second school I would like to highlight is Sailor Park School. So Sailor Park has a project-based learning effort within the community, in which they're going to empower the students to take an active role in their community into solving some real-life problems within their community, and be very innovative. And so we're very excited about that as well. Another 3.0 school. And we had an opportunity, board members, as well as the administration, had the opportunity to tour our very new acquisition of Mercy yesterday. And so tomorrow, we will have a press conference regarding the expansion in terms of our footprint on the west side of town with Mercy School. So we'll be having community conversations around what the school will actually be designed to hold in terms of elementary and high school students. And then last but not least, we will also have a press conference later on this week, on Friday, the 7th, for Clifton School. So we actually regained the possession of that building this month. And so we're very excited to get into that school. And we have, just as a reminder, preschool, kindergarten, and first-grade Clifton students currently at the Vine Street Academy. So that's my report.
Great. May I please have a motion to approve the revised recommendations of the superintendent?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Bolton?
I was just, sure. I'm going to just request, maybe, I'll do that in assignments.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Copeland-Dansby?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Aye.
May I please have a motion to approve the revised report of the treasurer?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Bolton?
I think we've had this cleared up. If we could just go to, what was the old Page 4, that, I think it may not be Page 4 anymore with the revisions, but it deals with the, let's see, I agreements, and it's just the Glazer Works and Borey Stone, the capital improvement. If those could be explained to the public, that would be great.
Mr. Adams, would you like to come discuss?
Yeah, it's I agreements, Glazer Works, and Boreys.
D and E.
D and E. D and E, yeah.
D.
I don't think we know where it is, but hopefully we'll still know.
Sorry, I'm not going to have news for you. But I can get you an answer today, and get with Robin, and find out what specifically has to do with it.
It sounds great. You okay with that?
Sure.
Okay.
Sorry for that.
No worries.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other comments? Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Copeland-Dansby?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Aye.
Are there any inquiries or updates? Ms. Bates?
I have one. I wanted to report to the board. I made an assignment some meetings ago that we work with, Pat Brunz, our State Board of Education, board member and representative to this area, especially in the area of graduation requirements, because we had heard that she was working on a, in a work group at ODE. And also, one of our teachers from Walnut is working on the same work group. And I wanted to make sure that there was alignment between what was going on in the work group as it was going on, and what we are doing here in the district, and what, you know, what would best serve our students. So that meeting took place this morning, and it gave the opportunity, I was invited to that, and that's what I get for making the assignment, right? I had to get up and go to an 8:30 meeting. But it provided the opportunity for the superintendent and her staff to provide input, because there are no final recommendations yet. There is a bill that is making its way through, hopefully, because it would work to our district and many districts' advantage. And what I also did, and Ms. Brunz accepted, was that I asked her to begin attending our Finance Committee meetings, when our governmental relations consultants reported to us. And we have a conversation monthly with them about what's important to the district to be pursued at the state level in particular. So she confirmed in a text a little bit later that she can come to the meeting on September the 20th. And I had always felt that there was a disconnect between, you know, what was going on in the legislature, what was going on in the state board, and what our needs were. And that would be a welcome addition for Ms. Brunz to consistently attend. And she said she would, as her schedule allowed. But she is, has confirmed that she's coming on the 20th. So hopefully, that's a relationship that we can continue to nurture.
That's great. Ms. Bolton?
Can I ask Chairman Bates, from Policy as well, I, two of our biggest priorities are what you just mentioned, which is that report card change into a new kind of report card, and the graduation requirements, even if there's still some distant chance of getting them still for this year, because we really don't want them right now the way they're going to be prior to a levy year, or whatever. Can we make sure that our lobbyists know that those are maybe in the top five priorities? Because they have a tendency, they're so complete, and they're so comprehensive, that I want to make sure that they, the ones who are paying to lobby for us, know what the real priorities are, rather than some of the more extraneous, or whatever, issues. I mean, that's, that just has to be number one, and two, I think, for our benefit and for economic development around here.
Yeah. If we could make sure that that's noted in the minutes, and that the administration has that to mention to our, to our lobbyists. I was thinking the same thing. I think also, in parallel with that, what I would also like to see presented to us, I think it's been presented to the administration, is the strategic, the Ohio Strategic Plan for Education. Have you guys seen or heard that?
Mm-hmm.
Laura?
Yes.
Superintendent?
So I don't know that we collectively, as a board, have heard that, and I don't know where that should live, in one of the committees, or that. But in my
Board.
Yeah, I think so, too. In my reviewing of it, literally, just within the past seven to 10 days, has some great points of alignment with the work that we're doing, especially related to equity. I'm so glad that we've been working on equity for a long time now, a minimum of five years. But somehow, to have that presented to us, when, I don't know, I'll leave that up to you guys. But just so that we can ensure that there is alignment, and perhaps then Pat can be our advocate to help us understand and/or take issues back. So I just think it's a great time to, I heard report card, the strategic plan, and the
Graduation.
And graduation requirements.
That's a great idea.
Yeah. And then I think, too, again, communicating with the public is, you know, the more we can talk about these things to the public, so that our families are completely 100% aware of what the requirements are for their children, and what the state and locally we promise to give them, so that they can be successful. It's a great time.
One more inquiry. I know we received a memo about the change of names regarding preschools.
Oh, yeah.
I think it's, I think that's fine. This will sound negative. But in the rebranding, if you will, of CPS, which we're really working hard to do, if we were to name, I would still like, and I think it's a hokey thing, Rising Stars. But I think I'd rather keep it Rising Stars at Westwood, or Rising, just because our brand in preschool is unsurpassed. I mean, that, there's no question. We have five-star units everywhere. We've been at this for 50 years. And I think it's part of the rebranding of the whole district. So, but if somebody said, I'm going to Westwood School, or I'm going to the Aiken unit, or whatever unit, then they look at the hideous report card. And unfortunately, it carries with it. Whereas, if people understood that our preschool is second to none, then that's part of the rebranding, because many of our schools are second to none. But we know our preschool is, has that, can have that image, and it's been provable.
So my apologies on the name. And we honestly are totally open to whatever suggestions. The location, that is, across the street from TAF, was called Everything, from O-
The location, that is, across the street from TAF was called Everything, from OTR to West End to, and so I like that, so thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Mr. Davis?
I had made a prior assignment in regard to safety at South Avondale School. Do we have an update?
So I did talk with our COO about that. I'm not sure that he has an update. So your assignment was around checking out the crime rates and study in the area around South Avondale, correct?
There were actually people hanging out on our campus at South Avondale on the steps that are on the circle side of that street, and Principal Allison had mentioned that it was troublesome for his staff after school.
Okay. So Scott and I did talk about it, and he will follow up, make sure that's taken care of.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Important. I have a question related to preschool. We have five board members, five members that participate in the board? Help me. On the CPP coordinating?
There's one.
Are they board members? Hi, board member.
You have three of four board members.
Well, I'm going, I'm trying to drill down to that, right. So we have five people, I think, who are liaisons to CPP from Sinseide Public Schools.
Right.
And then we have some committee someplace, I'm not sure, I think I'm a part of it, that is related to preschool. It's myself, President Jones, and Mr. Messer. But because we don't have those meetings anymore, those committee meetings, and, you know, in a very brief conversation that I had, my concern is that we aren't supporting in the way that we could or should or need to, in that our representatives who attend the CPP board meeting, we never have conversations. We don't know what's discussed there. We don't know how to empower, I don't know how to empower them with what this board is directing for us to do. So when we talk about issues like expansion, I would have loved to have been a little bit more keyed in on it prior to today. So I'm just looking, in my inquiry, I'm looking for a way to better that process. If someone were to say to me, sit down with the five representatives on the third day of the month, I'm happy to do that. Or if we need a written update or something to give to them to empower them when they're attending the board meetings at CPP, we can do that, too. I just, I wanted to bring that up, because we have great folks who are serving for us. I just don't know that we're, I don't feel that I'm being as supportive as I can be, and I'd like to do better in that way. Okay. Thank you. Are there any assignments? Yes, Ms. Bates?
This is kind of a follow-up and almost an addendum to an assignment I made earlier, and thank you, Mr. McDowell, for the follow-up on the hiring, the demographics of our new hires. That was really helpful.
I agree.
But the other part of my assignment was to follow up on our minority staffing recruitment efforts. And I know that we had a presentation on that, but there were also some other, some other work items that were occurring, you know, Jillian Darwish was contacting Xavier, and we had kind of brainstormed a few ideas. I don't know if they were, you know, something that we could do or look into, you know, such as looking at the Cleveland Project with the retired, the second, second career people. But in addition to that, I guess this would be a further assignment, and especially, I'm not sure if you're planning to attend, Ms. Mitchell, the Council of Great City Schools, but I just read in my clips from OSBA that Baltimore is actively pursuing not only minority recruitment of staff, but retention, because they're finding that they, they'll recruit, but they leave fairly quickly. And so they're investing in a study and communicating with, you know, the superintendent or the people who are involved in that study in Baltimore might save us a little bit of work as well, and we may be able to get some ideas from them and, you know, that would benefit us and other districts as well. So just asking for a little bit of a-
Sure. I'd be glad to provide some more detail. First, thank you. We're always glad to pursue any opportunities where there's been work done in the field, where we can review or even partner with. We have, we did meet with Jillian, and she did make some contacts with Xavier. Then Xavier, we've all come together through the work that Byron White has been doing, because what we're really coming down to is fundamentally, we're looking at how we fund this. It comes down to dollars on how we can pay for retraining opportunities for individuals, which would be at the college level, which would be to attain a teaching license. We've had three meetings now, and we're getting to the point where, at the last meeting, CPS provided their data, here's what our recruitment efforts look like two, three years out, here's what our retention looks like, and now it's just really coming together with those groups and the universities partnered at the table to discuss how we could fund an initiative.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
That sounds good. Ms., I might want to even take that a step further. So I was going to attend the conference, and I'm unable to, but if there is a way for us to, I don't know, have a conference call or some dialogue with some of the learnings that Ms. Bates is talking about, I think could be really helpful. That doesn't cost us a thing but time.
Sure. The work that we've done?
The work that's being done in Baltimore that I'm sure will be a part of that conference. Just any learning we can do before or after, usually after that conference, there's a compilation of the information that was presented and given, so that might even be something to just keep your ears open. The conference is in mid-October, and again, I was gung-ho about getting there and bringing back everything I could. I just can't get there this time, so.
Great, thank you.
But that's just food for thought.
We'll definitely look for that opportunity.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other assignments? Ms.-
Just a reminder regarding my request for information, which was about the ending enrollment numbers at each of our schools for this past school year. I think I sent that. And then my annual, my annual request for the long-term subs by building. And I know it's still early in the year, and, you know, we are still kind of hiring and settling people in, but I really would appreciate the long-term sub list per site and then the enrollment numbers. And I do, and I want to announce, real quick if I could, and this is an assignment, but I don't know where else to put it, the next Strategic Engagement and Planning Committee meetings are going to be on October 16th, October 30th, and November 20th, if anybody wants to be looking at that at 4:00. So that's October, there's two there, October the 16th, October the 30th, November the 20th, and tentatively December the 4th, but we're kind of hoping that we'll be able to take December off. Thank you.
And Ms. Bolton and I are gonna spend some time talking about next steps related to step-
That'd be great.
-as well. There is no more business, and we are adjourned.
[inaudible]
We have some office issues occasionally.